Hey guys, so let's do that together. Let's work on the homework with collections. So this is the homework, there are 4 pieces. Let's do one by one. And I'll start from opening the IDE IntelliJ. Okay? I'll open the existing project. You may need to create one, you may want to just continue with the same project, doesn't matter. Okay? So I'll add the homework 7 here. Even though that's the number, it could be different for you. I'll work one by one. Home, Work, 7, okay? So I created the package inside of src... Let me close this one. src folder, right? And you can, inside of the homework, you can add the main. And add a public static void... Because all of these homeworks related to Java only will be starting from that running, right? From the running. And this is something that is you guys gonna do one by one. Uh... So yeah, okay, let's move on. Let's take a look what is the next... What is the task, right? So the first one. "Given an array of integers, write a method that will return the array list which has each value multiplied by 10." Okay, so um, let's see. So that's our public static void main. So I will... You can do one of the things, right? You can start writing the logic inside of the main. Or I would prefer, and even better, to add additional method. Um, and I'll call the method and print it inside of the main. So I would... You know, in Java, it's better to have everything inside of different methods. Instead of keeping all the logic inside of one method, it's better to move the logic out of the one method to smaller methods. And maybe even in the smaller classes sometimes. But we're gonna cover the classes later. Right now, guys, please do your best. First, use the debug as much as possible. Second, whenever you write a logic, try to keep the methods as small as possible. And each method should be responsible for some idea, for some, I don't know, specific logic across one single idea. Okay, so this is the task. So let me just copy the task. Okay, um, that's the comment. And I'll add the comment over here. "Given an array list of integers, write a method that will return the array list which has each value multiplied by..." Okay. So first things first. I added like 8 spaces here. So I'll start writing the program. Okay, cool. So public static void main, inside of the class, I'm fully ready. So I'll create a method, the static method, because I'm gonna call it from the static public static void main, right? Without creating any objects. Without creating any classes. Okay, so that's the first one. Public static void, I don't know, someProgram1. That's just a name I came up with. Okay, I'll move this comment about the method. And keep in mind, I have an empty line between the method, right? You don't wanna have empty line after the method. You don't want empty line before the method in the class. But between the methods, it's better to keep the empty line. That's just, you know, the conventions. I don't know. All the people who are doing the programming, they just keep that as the rule. It's not that if you wouldn't have the line between them, that the program wouldn't work. No, it's gonna work the same way. But if you keep that nice for the others who gonna read the program, the logic, the code, it'll be easier to read. Okay, so let's use that convention. "Give an array list of integers, write a method..." So let's first, first things first. "Given an array of integers..." Okay, so I'll create an array of integers. I'll start from list, um, integers, integer, and, okay, numbers equals new ArrayList. Okay? And I just simply, I didn't write the whole thing. I write Array all. And then I already see a hint. IntelliJ IDEA is smart enough to give me that suggestion. So I'll just accept the first one. Okay, perfect. And then you see here, it asking me to import the class. I'll just click... I just highlight this one and click import the class. Or you can use option enter. In Windows, it's Alt+Enter. And then I'll need to add the semicolon at the line inside of method. You need to end the lines of code with semicolon, that's important. So that's it. That's the empty list of integers, okay? So why do I have just a list? Why don't I have an array of list? Okay? That's the most of the common question recently I've been having from the students. So yes, you can actually define an array list over here, or you can keep a list here. So why would I need to do that, right? So the reason why you won't doing that is to keep your coding as more abstract as possible. Why? Because if I want to know what is the list, like, and you guys should know at that time, the list is the interface. And when I click command, or when you click Ctrl on Windows and click and hold it, you can highlight this list and you will see that's the interface. You see this little red tip, it's interface. And when you're doing the same for array list, you will see that it's... You don't see that here. But if you click on that, you will see that's the interface, okay? I'll go back. And if you open the array list, you will see that this is actually a constructor. But in the top, you will see a class ArrayList. So this is a class. And if you scroll down, you will see actual logic, actual code. So that's the class, that's implementation. However, this interface has no... It has just empty methods, as you can see. Empty methods everywhere. So when you have, for example, indexOf is just empty method without the body, without actual code. When you have add method, it's just an empty body. So it has a certain amount of different methods without implementation. That's a very like... Interface is a very abstract scene. The implementation of the list is the array list, right? Could be LinkedList, it could be ArrayList. But those are the two most common implementations of the list interface. So ArrayList, or you can type LinkedList, right? Those are the two interfaces, two classes that implement the same interface, list, in a different way. Sometimes it's better to use an array list, sometimes it's better to use the LinkedList. You have, if you're curious about what is the difference between those two, you can open the PDF with all the questions and answers for the interview. You can check it out and see the difference. You will see the answer for the difference. Okay, let's move on. So given an array... So it's always better to use the list. And for the, for the, for the method, for example, that I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use list instead of array list of array... Of array list, sorry about that. Of the integers. Integer sum list numbers. Okay, so perfect. Um... So that's, that would allow me actually to pass the list over here, either that, array list, or LinkedList, or some other list, you know, some other object that is implemented by an array list, or LinkedList, or anything else. You know, as long as we keep the list as the abstract, abstract like way, you can pass here any, any kind of list. So that's, that's how implemented in Java, with the collections. So if you can use the array and abstraction, please use that. Okay, so let's move on. So the task, this one is not done yet. So let me add some numbers, okay? Uh, 1... Okay, let me add quite a few, like over here. Okay, so that's done, okay? So we added some numbers inside. You can add like hundreds of numbers, but for us, it's enough. So, and I will call the method someProgram1, and I'll pass these numbers. Okay, so I passed that list object. So here, we created the object. Let me say in loud, what did we do that in the line number 8? We created the list object with the name numbers that is based on the ArrayList class and list interface. Okay, so that's what we created. So this list is a collection of integers. And it is implemented based of an array list. So that's an array list object. And we pass it over here. And this point over here in the method, the calculator, the Java, would not be able to use the extra method if the array list as a class has some extra method that list doesn't have. Then Java would not allow using that. Because at this point, in this context of the Java program, Java would only be able to provide the methods that will be only in the list. I'm not sure if there is, if there are any extra methods in the array list. I think there are some. But just, that's the limitation we would have. But that's good, because we're gonna use the abstract. Wait, wait, let's, let's move on. "Write a method that will return the array list which has each value multiplied by 10." Okay, so I'll go and do that for each. So once I type this for, I'll select for each. And I'll, I'll write int num. And then click Enter. Here, I'll, I'll write list numbers. And click Enter. And here, I'll do like, um, the... The num equals num multiplied by 10, and the semicolon, okay? So, and then... And then that's, I think that's... Could be that, could be it. But I don't think that it's gonna do anything. I don't think it's gonna do anything. And, and first of all, it asking to return the method that should return. So returning the array list. So okay, they want to return the array list, that's fine. But the problem with that is, you know, I don't like returning the specific class. I would return the list and would specify of the integers. List of integers. That's what I would prefer to return. Why? Because list is more abstract way. And specifying the integers over here in the main, I would expect that list of integers returning back, okay? And I'll update it, updated numbers. I'll name something like that. Okay, so now we have that. And now, um, I would want also to print what we have got after calling this method for the numbers. So we'll get that in returning another collection object. And I'll go through the for each, for that. Int n, updated numbers, okay? And I'll do that system.out, print a n for each n, okay? So that way, I'll print all the numbers from this, from this collection. Okay, so let's, let's finish up here. So I want to have that in the same line. Okay, so that's perfect. So we have n... So I think, I think it's better to use instead of for each, since the for each is a nice short way. But the disadvantage of the for each, of the short form, is that we won't have the ID, the position of the element. That's why, and I actually won't having that. So i equals 0, then semicolon, i less than list numbers length or size, size, then semicolon, um, i++. So this is the most standard way. And for the, for the, for the list that we're gonna return, we're gonna... We have actually two ways of doing that. We can, first way, we can create a new list, completely different list, right? And, um, new list, for example. Arraylist. And then for this list, we can just add the values, add the values from the, from the input list and return this new list after we are done. So this is the most safest way of doing the task, okay? Let's do that. So add the, add the list numbers. Um, get, and then i, and then multiply 10. So this would be considered as the most safest way of creating another collection and add the elements multiplying by 10, each by, one by one, to the new collection and return this new collection, okay? However, it's not the best way from the performance point of view. So the computer gonna get a little more memory, keeping in the memory both, um, both kind of objects, right? Because imagine, we just have 5 elements. But imagine if we have like thousands or millions of elements, so then the program would take, will be slower and would consume more resources. And that, that's, that's why it's always like, for... You always have to choose, right? If that's just automation task case, it's good just being safe and, and just have created another collection object and, and, you know, return that. But if we just worry about the performance and we're gonna use a lot of data, then instead of creating a new object, I would have to, I would have to work with the same list numbers. And instead of add, I would keep set. And then here, I would specify the same element. And then here, I will say this element multiplied by 10. So this, this would, would be the same. You'd have to make sure there is no errors, it's working properly. So let's actually run it. I'll, I'll do the debug, guys. Please use the, use the debug as much as possible, because that's how you learn how the Java and compiler is working, right? So I'll go one by one. And then over here, you will see numbers. There are 5 numbers, starting from 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 total. Size 5, okay? So, and I'll, I'll go inside, okay? And I'll see, one by one, this list numbers gonna be changed, right? The element 0 gonna be, instead of 1, it's gonna be 10, right? 1 multiplied 10 is gonna be, uh, 10. Okay, 10. Then the second one, instead of 5, is gonna be 50. Okay, then 23 multiplied, then 230, 60, and 50, okay? Then we're returning that object back. And then we're going and, we're gonna print it out one by one. Okay? So that's, that's done, right? So we done it in more, um, more kind of better performance way this, using the same object. Okay, so, um, besides that, if you don't return the... Actually, actually, besides that, if you don't... You can do this. However, you also can use the same, um, the same, the same object. Since we using the same object over here, you don't even need to worry about returning that. Because there is a reference. Since you work with the same collection over here, instead of actual, actual variable, creating a new variable, we actually send in here the, the reference to the same object, right? And if we, if we just continue like that without assigning the value back from here, even though it's returning something, right? I don't use anything over here, right? You can remove that. You can do that, wait, and remove returning statement here. And at the same time, it's still, when we gonna use these numbers, you will see that it, it also works. So let, let me show you. Let me show you this trick. It only, only works with the, with the, with the objects, right? That's, that's the way the Java is working. So little more advanced, I'm showing you, but you, you maybe you'll see that. Okay, 1, 5, 23, etc. So let's go inside and we multiplying, we updating the same object. We updating the same object. Because the, the reference to this object is the same, right? Over here, and over here in both methods, the same object. So let me do over here. And then when we go outside, you see the numbers. Since it's the same object, and we actually can do this. In, when I click over here, evaluate expression, I can, I can type numbers and just evaluate, evaluate, not, not here. System.out, print a n, and then numbers. So whenever you do the system.out, print a n from the object, you will see reference. Oh, that's not what I was expecting. Let me try to get something... Huh, um... Okay. So maybe that, that's, that's something different. But okay, so no worries about that. But yeah, the object is, is updated even here without anything to return, just because it's based on the reference. Because it's object. And because we haven't created any, any other, any other, um, collections, right? You remember, at the beginning, I was showing another way. You can create another collections and add all the elements from this collection to another one. If we would do that, then we would indeed have to return it in order to get the numbers updated. In that way, we would have numbers with the old values. That's the one object. And another object that is gathered, returned back from some, from this, from this method. And with, um, with the copy of this math, of this values multiplied by 10. Okay, so that, there are different ways, different ways. So I gave you a little more than I was planning to give you, but this is, this is good, guys. Hopefully, you understand that. So let's move on. "So given an array list of integers, write a method that will check if a array list has a number 5 and replace it with 0, return the updated array." Okay, so, um, the, so this sounds like from the task, it sounds like it's expecting us to work with the same array. Not with the copy of the array, but the same array. Okay, so another thing, guys. So the array list of integers could be as like super long, could be a thousand. You never like, can, when you work on the program and you work on the method, like over here, you should keep in mind that this, uh, this, this method can, can, can get as a list of the numbers without you knowing what gonna be the numbers and how long gonna be the list, right? So let me create a completely... Let me first rename this one. Refactor, rename. I'll write as 1. Okay? And I'll create another main, uh, main 2 class. We'll add a public static void main, public static void main, okay? So now it's executable as well. And, um, and now let me copy that task. I'll do the same. I'll create a method. Okay, so I have here like some method, for example. Okay, let, let me see. Let me see logically how it's better to be named. Because I didn't think about that last time. But here, I would better, rather rename it to something like, um, refactor rename, um, multiply by, by 10, maybe 10 like this. Okay? So over here, let's rename it of something... Let's, let's give the name right away, good name. So public void, oh, static void. And then what would be the name? Um, replace number 5, okay? If... Okay, that's fine. Uh, and then the body over here. And then we have a list also of integers. Integers, uh, list integers, for example, right? I'll import that list over here. Just click an option return, or Alt+Return, and hit the Enter. And then, actually a typo here. I don't like typos. Okay, so I'll keep just one space between the methods. And over here, I'll call that... I'll create a list of integers. Integers, uh, list, for example, of integers. And I'll do that new array list. And then semicolon, and then list, and, I don't know, some 45. And one of them will be 5, another will be 5, and the other will be 4. And here will be 98, for example. And over here, so what we can do? We can, can go over that, um, over that, I don't like... Okay, so let's go like this. Int, um, number, num, um, then list, list of integers. And then I'll go, actually, yeah, I'll have to do that probably in a more longer way. Just, just to make sure, you know, don't be lazy to write the whole form every time. It's better to write like 4 in a full format, like, it's always easier to do that. Maybe not always better for visibility, but you will rest assured that you don't need to change anything after you've done that. Okay, so int e equals 0, semicolon, e, i less than, um, list integers size minus 1, i plus plus, okay? So that's, that's the standard way of creating that, um, for loop. And then for the list of integers, you want to do add, actually set, and then i comma, and then the new value. Oh, actually, the new value will be what? Replace it with 0, okay, with 0. But we don't want to do that for each element. We want to do that only if the, if the, if the current element... How to get that current element? Let, let me show you. So int currentElement equals to list of integers get. And the current one, current index is i, right? So the get from the collection, from the list collection is always gonna return you the value, right? And ID, the position is, is, this is the position, right? i. So, and we want to do like this. If the current element equals to 5, then only we do that set. Otherwise, we don't do anything, right? We don't need to write else. So that's pretty much it. So we're gonna call that, now, call that, call that, um, uh, call that method, right? And pass that list over here. And then we want to do that, um, for, for each, right? Int n, list, and then system, cout, n, okay? So, uh, let's read again. "Given a array list of integers, write a method that will check if a array list has a number 5 and replace it with a 0." 0, okay. So perfect, perfect. So we might have like many 5s, we might have 05s. So it's gonna go through the, through the, through the array, through this list, I'm sorry, through the list and array list. And then we'll replace, we'll check first of all if there is, if the current value is 5. Then only if there is a 5, it will replace it to 0. So let's, um, so guys, for you, please do the debug. Add the breakpoints, add the breakpoints, that's important. And do the debug. For me, I'll just run it and we'll make sure that it's working. Okay, 4, 45, 0, means because we have 5, 45, 0, 98. So that works perfectly. Okay, so that's good. So, and, and the, and the one of the more advanced things. Find duplicates in the array list by sorting it first using the build in sorted method. So let me see what are the building sort methods exist in Java? Java, how to sort, um, list? Okay? Collection sort. So I just see that first thing and I, I realized that's what I need to try. Okay? So collection sort. Okay, so that's an example. I actually like this website, geek, blah, blah, blah. So I like that. You know, this is a very simple way. This is exactly what I am planning to do. And let me write a math, main 3, okay? And then over here, I'll do the public static void main. Okay? I'm gonna do the same, um, blah, blah. Okay? So public static void, um, what is that? Um, sort duplicate, duplicates, um, remove, remove duplicates, okay? And then over here, I'll, I'll use list, okay, of integers, integers list. Okay, I'll, I'll add that, import that list, perfect. Yeah, I know, guys, I'm quite fast right now, so yeah. That's because for the previous 2, 2... Yeah, I know, guys, I'm quite fast right now, so you, that's because for the previous two, two, two tasks, I, I've done the same. So find duplicates in an array list by sorting it first using the built-in sorted method, okay? Okay, so let's first of all, um, do the sort. So collections, sort, okay? So let me import that, perfect. I'll pass the list here. I'll copy the numbers and the whole declaration of the objects from the previous, okay? So I have the same, I have the same, that's good. Okay, so, um, now I am calling that remove duplicates, and I'm gonna pass that list over here. So, and now I want actually to see what is gonna be list after that sort. Okay, I'll, I'll want to maybe do some system out, print a n, just empty, right here. But I want to see in a debug mode. Okay, so let me run it. Oh, one second, so I'm doing something wrong. So I was in the main2, so I need to switch to main3. So let me do that debug for main3. Okay, so after that sorting out, my list is 0, 1, 2, okay? 4, 5, 5, 4, 45, 45, 98. Okay, that's good, that's good, that's good. But, but it's not resolving me that, 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 that's not, it's not the solution right here, right? It's not the solution how to remove the duplicates. The solution for removing the duplicates is a little more advanced, right? So, um, you can, you can try different ways. In order to solve that, that issue, that, that task, you can do, uh, a research, right? Of how the, how this algorithm is, can be, can be done, right? So, um, and the way to approach for such algorithms, you know, that's something that you can, you can do the practice and Google, and, and this is little more advanced, right? So I'll, I'll put the, uh, first of all, I'll, I'll give you the idea where you can learn it. So in a spin career, we have a block. We have a block, and in the block, you will be able to see different categories. So in the category, you can see coding tasks for interview. And this one for the, uh, for the, for the, for the duplicates, I think we have something like that. Um, algorithm for the method swap, Fibonacci, arithmetic, mean. Let me see, there should be some searching for element in the array, like, going on Java, and recall computing, the difficult, okay? Select sorting, coding, okay, bubble sort, array reverse. Yeah, we don't have that, we don't have that. However, however, I'll do my best in order to, in order to record a separate video of showing you how to approach for managing the removal of the duplicated, uh, numbers, okay? So also, if I have, I think we have, uh, video from the other instructor for, for that implementation. So that's a little bit more advanced. However, you guys can learn that, and this is something that would come to you a little later, once you have more and more practice. First things first, make sure you know how to complete, to create the objects, you know how to do the simple things, and then approach to the more complex things when you have more time and more energy. Thank you, guys.